Lawsuit. In looking at these opinions, it seems to be the legal opinion I would render is that to avoid the potential for a very expensive, potentially very expensive litigation, the council give consideration to adoption of the ordinance to change the hours from nine to five to nine to nine and perhaps publicize in the newsletter for any residents who are not aware of the methodology of getting on a basically do not knock on my door list. And that's kind of what I would recommend and that would be my legal recommendation.
And Mr. Schnall, this is something that we can revisit if it ends up being problematic, correct?
The council can always revisit its actions. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Sanderson?
Is it true that we have a currently an opt-out or opt-in? That is, do we maintain a list of people that do or do not want to go ahead and have their door knocked on?
If I recall correctly, it's an opt-out.
So is there any constitutional issues with, I guess, an opt-in system where basically everybody has assumed that we don't want to have our door knocked on and then we would go ahead and state that we want to be sold to?
Without researching it, I couldn't give you a definitive answer, but my thought would be that the likelihood is that would not pass constitutional muster because that's the equivalent of an outright ban. And those are clearly not permitted under the First Amendment to the Constitution.
It's interesting that that is something that's currently occurring on a federal level when it comes to, you know, mobile telephone calls and, you know, relic calls, et cetera, et cetera.
I appreciate the difference. I certainly don't want someone knocking on my door at eight fifty-nine PM either. I'm trying to just let the council know that we got this letter, that I think this law firm is serious about pursuing this. I've actually seen a moxie pest control truck in this community within the last ten days. Would never have thought, I recognized it except for this letter and this issue, but I leave to the sound judgment of the governing body what action to take this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept the ordinance as presented. Excuse me, I'll revise that.
Ms. Jaffet would, I believe she wants to speak utilizing Section G. Would council be okay hearing from Ms. Jaffet? All in favor of hearing from Ms. Jaffet? Ms. Jaffet, they want to hear from you. Please come up. You have three minutes.
My name is Laverne Jaffet, twelve Shady Cove.
Laverne, lower the mic.
Okay, okay. Now, this ordinance is, of course, part of our area, but why couldn't we or should we not maybe have the little tags that you put on your doors or windows saying no soliciting? Can that be added into this or is that a very anti-for the people who are trying to make a living selling all their wares? That's my question. Why could we not have something on our side?
I will see what Mr. Schnall has to say about that.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Jaffet.
Mayor, I don't think there's any problem with our looking at our ordinance to see if we can add something like that to it. I do want to point out that in the long paragraph near the bottom of Page Two of this June seventeen letter, the author points out that, among other things, a curfew, a sunset curfew was declared unconstitutional in a case decided by the Third Federal Circuit Court, not in, not a Fifth Circuit case, but a Third Circuit case, which is why I had some concern about the suggestion Mr. McCormick had. And I know that you recognized or asked the council to allow Ms. Jaffet to speak. I don't know whether anyone seconded Ms. McLean's motion.
Okay.
Mr. Schnall, I was going to revise it because I don't think I mentioned the ordinance number or the caption.
Mr., before you get there, I think Mr. Gregory had something.
Mr. Schnall, how does this affect gated communities and PUDs? Does this give them the right to climb over the fence?
I've really never thought about that. We don't really have very many gated communities in the city of Castle Hills. I'm not sure we have any.
Yeah, we do have one and one whose gate is broken and we have at least one PUD.
Well, those are controlled primarily probably by private property owners associations. The city can't really regulate what they decide or not decide to do, but we as a city, you know, my legal opinion is we as a city have an obligation to have ordinances which are constitutional. And if there's case law around the country that says that an ordinance with a five o'clock deadline is unconstitutional and we've been given an opportunity to fix it without getting sued, my legal judgment is we ought to seriously consider fixing it so we don't get sued.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall. Ms. McLean?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash zero eight dash thirteen dash A, an ordinance amending Section thirty-two dash five of Chapter thirty-two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Castle Hills to revise the time period within which solicitors or canvassers of orders for services or merchandise or for peddlers, intinerate merchants, and transient vendors of merchandise or distributors of advertising handbills, leaflets, or papers may go to private residences in person as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. First by Ms. McLean, second by Mr. McCormick. All in favor? All opposed? Ms. Winger's a dissenting vote. Motion passes four to one. Discussion and possible action authorizing the city manager to advertise for, request for proposals for financial auditing services for FY twenty nineteen. Mr. Rappley.
So moved.
Yes, Mayor. This item was on the July ninth meeting. It was a request by council in the past to go out for auditors and this is why it's on the agenda.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. Winger.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like Mrs. Winger to state a proper motion. What is she moving?
Ms. Winger, would you mind? Ms. Winger?
I'm, I so moved.
Would you mind stating the motion? I'm sorry.
Authorize the city manager to advertise for request for proposals for the twenty nineteen financial auditing service.
Thank you. It's the first by Ms. Winger.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. McLean. Any discussion? Can we vote or do we need to wait for Mr. McCormick?
You have a quorum. You can continue.
All in favor? Motion passes four.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
I think we can pull item ten because it's moot.
Okay, we have a motion to pull item ten by Ms. Winger. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Gregory. All in favor?
We already pulled that.
No, we didn't pull ten. We pulled twelve, thirteen.
And pull items and pull item, did we already pull item?
Before you get there.
Can?
Item ten. All in favor of pulling item ten? Okay, four, passes unanimously, four, zero. Let's see here. If I remember correctly, we're on item fifteen. Public hearing on a proposed amendment to Section fifty dash one of the Code of Ordinances to add a definition of impound lot and on a proposed amendment to Section fifty dash three eight eight of the Code of Ordinances to prohibit impound lots in the city.
I still move the motion.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, this is to adopt an ordinance. What is the motion?
Mayor, it's to have a public hearing.
Excuse me, did you open the public hearing?
No, that's what I was getting ready to do.
Okay, so before there's a motion, there ought to be the public hearing.
Right. Okay, do we have the list for the public hearing? Okay, well, it is nine forty and we're going to open the public hearing. Mr. Fletcher's grabbing that real quick. Do we have anybody on there, Mr. Fletcher?
Just citizens, we heard. I think one of them.
Do we have anybody that would like to speak? Ms. Scott, three minutes, please.
Marissa Scott, two oh seven Prince Drive. I have issue with this banning impound lots in all of Castle Hills and every single zone out there. Impound lots can be very profitable. They can be a service to the city. They have their uses and I don't see why they need to be banned in the entire city of Castle Hills. That's what zoning is for, to find a proper zone to put one in and where it needs to go. And if zoning can't find a place within our entire city to allow to have an impound lot of some form or fashion, whether it's for a private sector use or a public sector use, it seems that they're not looking quite hard enough at the zoning. So I am completely against banning them altogether. I think it's something that they need to look at a little bit closer and reevaluate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Do we have anybody else? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. It is nine forty-one. We're on to item number sixteen.
No, 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 we have to vote on fifteen. It's a public hearing. No, we don't vote, it's a public hearing.
Okay, item sixteen. Mr. Rappley, you have something?
Mayor, Chairman Rodriguez is here on behalf of the Zoning Commission to give the recommendation of what zoning did on July second.
Okay, I'll open this up and I'll give the floor to Mr. Rodriguez. Item sixteen, discussion and possible action adopting ordinance number two zero one nine dash zero eight dash one three dash B, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Castle Hills, Texas, amending Section fifty dash one of Chapter fifty of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Castle Hills, Texas, to define impound lot and amending Section fifty dash three eight eight of Section fifty, of Chapter fifty of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Castle Hills, Texas, to prohibit impound lots in the city of Castle Hills and on recommendation from the Zoning Commission to the City of Council on an amendment to Section fifty dash one of the Code of Ordinances to add the definition of impound lot and on a proposed amendment to Section fifty dash three eight eight of the Code of Ordinances to prohibit impound lots in the city. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, council. The Zoning Commission recommended impound lots are not permitted. It is being requested to add some verbiage from the standpoint of the council. Again, zoning recommends council votes and make this decision. On the resolution, impound lot means a lot or area of a lot where vehicles impounded by the city. It's requested of council to add verbiage as a council if they take the recommendation of the zoning of Castle Hills, excuse me, by the city of Castle Hills, Castle Hills Police Department, or any public or private entity are stored in any form or manner. By including this, as we've heard tonight, a couple of items, this should protect the integrity of our neighborhoods. I think, Mr. Trevino, you may remember historically, I think, that a resident, as it was communicated to me directly by the resident, was approached by council member as well as some department heads, trying to convince the family that an impound lot was a good idea.
Well, that's a really, does it really relate to this?
Now, again, just by what I heard here, that protecting the integrity of our neighborhoods, this resolution, as you see it, was passed by the Zoning Commission that impound lots are not permitted, but just thought I would help here a bit to help the council, being communicated to by that resident and council voting on this, if that is something that they would consider.
So I'd like to move to approve the recommendation of the Zoning Commission to ban impound lots in the city.
I second it.
Okay, we have a first by Ms. Winger, a second by Mr. Sanderson. Ms. McLean, discussion?
So are you voting to adopt the ordinance as presented? Are you voting to adopt the ordinance or making a motion that we adopt it as it was suggested we revise it, what Mr. Rodriguez is suggesting? Here's my problem. Right now, the ordinance is written that only the city police department can't impound vehicles, so you get a private party come in, comes in and they open an impound lot somebody. And so we've taken a revenue stream that we could have had for our city in a valid place where impound, where storing vehicles would be allowed, and we've given it to a private entity when it's something that we could have used as a resource for our city. So what I'm asking is, are you asking for us to approve it as it stands or with the additional language that Mr. Rodriguez is proposing?
Well, as it stands, it's to prohibit impound lots in the city, period, and that's what I'm proposing. I'm making the motion to that effect as it's on here.
No.
And I'm seconding on that.
Ms. McLean?
No, it doesn't. If you look under Section One, it says impound lot means a lot or area of a lot where vehicles impounded by the city police department are stored.
Well, I don't have that information here, so.
In your packet.
Well, not in my packet.
It's in my packet. Ms. Winger, how would you like to?
So why are we targeting our police department with this ordinance?
Are we going, are we, are we doing number sixteen?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Rodriguez, yes, sir.
I cited an example that you may be familiar with, Mr. Trevino, and people are always saying, not in my backyard. And when we've received information, even from zoning review, a lot of the words are, should protect the integrity of our neighborhoods.
I don't think Ms. McLean's questioning that, Mr. Rodriguez. I think she's just questioning the ordinance as written.
I didn't catch your modification. You had three or four words that you were going to add and you dropped in and out, so I did not hear the suggested language you had.
Again, there was a recommendation by the Zoning Commission that was passed. Okay? Now, impound, let me read exactly the, to answer your question directly, Ms. McLean. As it is written, impound lot means a lot or area of a lot where vehicles impounded by the city police department are stored. It is being requested for your consideration. Impound lot means a lot or area of a lot where vehicles impounded by the city of Castle Hills.
Are stored.
Castle Hills Police Department, comma.
Where is the castle?
Or any public or private entity are stored in any form or manner.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Again, Mr. Trevino, you may be familiar with this situation?
Point of order.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. McLean?
Point of order, it's off topic.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I got it read it correctly and I'm standing by it. Impound lots, period. That was the motion.
Excuse me, can you repeat the motion, Ms. Winger? Or Mr. Gregory, you have a question?
I see what we're talking about. Can it be, can it be clarified by simply removing by the, by the City of Castle Hills Police Department and read, impound lot means a lot or area of a lot where vehicles impounded or stored? Do we have to know who is doing the impounding?
I think that's a good point.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, I think that's a good catch, all to remove police department.
It just, it strikes me if you take out by the City of Castle Hills Police Department and just say, it's where vehicles impounded or stored, you don't have to talk about who's doing the impound.
Say impounded or stored?
Yep. Are stored. A-R-E. A-R-E. Are stored.
Oh, are stored. A-R-E stored.
Yep. So I would just remove by the city police department and simply have the second line of Section One, impound lot means a lot or area of a lot where vehicles impounded are stored.
Okay, we have Mr., sorry, Brother Dooling that would like to speak, exercising Section G. Would council be willing to hear from Brother Dooling? All in favor? All opposed? Oh, we're going to hear from Brother Dooling. Please come on up.
Brother William Dooling, two zero one Gladiolo Lane. Excuse me. Now that we got the clear language, I have a concern about the storage. And impounding is kind of a term of art. It's not very clear. You can impound water, you can impound, you know. So I think it really needs to be tweaked because if you say stored, and there is case law in this, about people who store antique vehicles on their property, so a lot or a portion of a lot where vehicles are stored, there are citizens that would be affected. And I just think, you know, that's, it's just not right. I mean, the language is not clear, it's not specific, it's not been well crafted. So I think you're really asking for problems there because, for example, I have a son who lives next door and he has an antique car stored in his garage.
But it's not impounded.
Ms. Winger?
Impound is not a legal term, it's a term of art, and I just think it needs to be more clear and more specific and it, and I'm, what I'm complaining about, Ms. Winger, is not the impound. I think that's not clear. I'm talking about or stored. My family has a stored vehicle and it would be in violation of this ordinance and I think there's a lot of other people that do as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Dooling. I would have to agree with Brother Dooling.
Mayor, can I hear from the police chief on the storage aspect?
Yes, sir. Chief Siemens?
Thank you, city manager and Mr. Mayor. I too have some concerns with the stored aspect as oftentimes, for instance, in major, major criminal offenses like the officers getting injured at the overpass, we store vehicles back here while we inventory them for police, you know, inventory for CID prior to obtaining warrants days later or weeks later in matters of urgency. I think stored also needs to be corrected and taking that into consideration because it could seriously hinder criminal prosecution.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Gregory?
Simply read English. It says impound lot means a lot or area where a lot where vehicles impounded are stored, not stored vehicles, where vehicles that are impounded are stored. And that addresses your point, too.
Yes, sir.
So this is very clear, crystal clear, only impounded vehicles.
But the Boolean logic, or stored, doesn't that?
No, it doesn't.
It says where vehicles impounded.
I don't have a copy of that.
It's, it's very specific. Vehicles impounded are stored.
Yeah, it's not or, it's are. A-R-E. A verb.
Thank you. I misunderstood the verbiage there. I thought it was the Boolean logic, or stored.
No, it's A-R-E.
Okay, I'd like to call for the question.
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion.
Mr. Gregory?
Section one, second line, I recommend we remove by the city police department.
And that's where?
Under section one, second line, impact, to read, impound lot means a lot or area of a lot where vehicles impounded are stored.
Okay.
So would that eliminate the possibility of having folks open up an impound lot that stores, let's say, repossessed vehicles from dealerships, banks, whatever, et cetera? That's, that's another concern as well.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Ms. McLean. All right, that's an amendment, correct, Mr. Gregory?
Yes, I'm making a second to the amendment.
A second to the amendment. Any discussion on the second, on the amendment before we call for a vote? Okay, call for a vote on the amendment as presented by Mr. Gregory. All in favor? Okay, the amendment passes unanimously. Now we're back to the original motion. Is that correct?
The main motion as amended by the deletion of the words, Mr. Gregory's amendment deleted and that's automatically before the council.
Thank you so much. All in favor? All opposed? Four to one, a motion, amended motion passes.
Mayor, I'd like to be able to dismiss our chiefs and Mr. Harada because no other agenda items are affecting them being here.
Okay, thank you all so much for being here.
What, what number are we up to?
I believe we are at seventeen.
Okay, I would like to table seventeen and eighteen. Move to table.
Okay, we have a motion to table seventeen and eighteen. Do we have a second? A second by Mr. Sanderson. Any discussion?
These are regarding.
No discussion on a motion to table, mayor.
Good call, good catch. All in favor? All opposed? Or Mr. McCormick, you with that? Okay. Motion passes unanimously to table seventeen and eighteen.
I'd also, I'd also like to move to table nineteen because this is an item that Mr. Sanderson and I have been working on with the local attorney, so we will have that in place to present to council before September first. So I'd like to move to table.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to table, item number nineteen, by Ms. Winger, a second by Mr. Sanderson. All in favor? All opposed? Staining?
No, I can't decide.
Okay, motion fails. A motion passes, I apologize, to table three to two. Okay, item number twenty. Excuse me? Twenty?
We just did twenty-two. Now we're back to which one?
No, we did nineteen.
Twenty.
Okay, in the interest of time, I will table item number twenty. If anybody has any objection to that?
No, but I'll answer it when you bring it up.
Perfect. All in favor? Unanimous, I love it.
Mayor, I hate to do this, but you can't make a motion to table it. You can pull it if it's your item.
I'll pull it.
I'll make a motion to pull it.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Sanderson?
He can make a motion to table and you can pull it.
I'll just pull it. How about that?
Right.
Okay, item number twenty-two. Discussion and possible action on ordinance number two zero one nine dash zero eight dash one three dash D, an ordinance amending the special use permit granted to Wayside Chapel Evangelical Free Church approved by ordinance number one zero six nine on March eighth, twenty nine, twenty eleven, and amended by ordinance number one 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 on November twelfth, twenty thirteen, and on the recommendation of the Zoning Commission to city council to approve an application from Wayside Chapel Evangelical Free Church for an amendment to a special use permit granted on March twenty eleven to add property located at one one two Ivywood Circle. Legal description CB five zero zero seven B, block three, lot three, to the property included under the SUP.
What happened to twenty-two?
No, he's not going to speak.
I thought he said Wayside.
Mr. Schnall? I see, I got you, sir.
Master Gordon.
Yes, sir. Would you like to speak?
Yes.
Mayor Trevino and members of the council, first of all, I'd like to point out that there's a typo in that agenda item, that it's not one one two Ivywood Circle, it's in fact, one one three Ivywood Circle. And I'm here to encourage the council to approve and pass the ordinance that Mr. Schnall has drafted, ordinance number two zero one nine zero eight one three D, an ordinance amending the special use permit granted to Wayside Chapel Free Church approved by ordinance number ten sixty-nine on March eighth, twenty eleven, and amended by ordinance number one 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 on November twelfth, twenty thirteen. And as that is. And as that is written into the ordinance, A, condition number three of the SUP is amended to read as follows. Three, the properties at one hundred, one oh two, one oh four, one oh seven, one oh nine, one eleven, one fifteen, one seventeen, and one thirteen Ivywood Circle shall be used for church and religious purposes. And as we have stated before, we are making this request based on three conditions. Number one, based on the city of Castle Hills code of ordinances, specifically Division Two under a single-family district, section five zero dash six one, use regulations, paragraph five, item number five, where it says churches are allowed an SUP in an A, single-family district, excuse me. Also, in the Castle Hills code of ordinances, we are making this request according to section five zero five hundred, number B, where the request does not adversely affect traffic, it does not adversely affect public health, it does not adversely affect, affect public utilities, it does not adversely affect public safety, nor does it adversely affect the general welfare. Secondly, we are making this request based on the Federal Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act of two thousand, which is a federal law designed to protect houses of worship from discrimination. And I read specifically that act, which says, quote, "No government shall impose or implement a land use regulation in a manner that imposes a substantial burden on the religious exercise of a person, including a religious assembly or institution unless the government demonstrates that imposition of the burden on that person, assembly, or institution, A, is the, is in furtherance of a compelling government interest, and B, is the least restrictive means of furthering that compelling government interest." And thirdly, we are making this request based on the recommendation of the zoning commission on May seventh to recommend to the council that the application to amend the SUP be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Mr. Mayor?
Um, yes, Ms. McLean?
The, the item, as it was put out in the agenda, has a typo when it comes to the property that we were actually discussing, but only this, the, the citation, it says one twelve Ivywood Circle instead of one thirteen Ivywood Circle. But the ordinance caption reads correctly. Is this a problem, Mr. Schnall?
Because the agenda item also has the legal description, I think that we're okay. In my legal opinion is that city council can proceed because the legal description would be a more specific description than the street address.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall. Ms. Winger.
Yeah, I would like to move to send this matter back to zoning because I don't think from the description that we got from zoning that they really understood what they were talking about at all, and I think it needs to be reconsidered by zoning.
I will second that.
We have a first by Ms. Winger to send it back to zoning, a second by Mr. Sanderson. All in favor? I'm sorry, missed discussion. Mr. Gregory.
I have to admit, I think Mrs. Winger is right on this one. Because when we gave this, they were, it was very sufficient for one thirteen Ivywood Circle to be used for religious purposes. I don't know how many properties on Ivywood Circle are not owned by the church. I think there are two, but I'm not sure. And public health and safety comes in, if you have all the properties used for religious purposes on Sunday, the very narrow street is going to be totally blocked. And if you have to have an emergency vehicle come in there for fire or something like that, or if this one building, I think the residents are very old, can't get through because both sides of the street have cars on them, then you have a public safety question. So I, I, I do suggest and agree that this should go back to the zoning commission and so that they can go further in depth with the church to discuss this potential problem.
Thank you. Sir, did you have a comment?
Yes, I'd like to address Mulderman Gregory's concern, is that the church owns eleven of the twelve properties on Ivywood Circle. And the church abides by the no parking, the city of Castle Hills no parking signs on that street to allow access for emergency vehicles on Sunday, specifically on Sunday mornings.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion?
This is, this was the old zoning commission, was it?
I, I don't know, sir.
I believe it was, yes, sir.
Yes, Councilman, this was in May, previous commission.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Winger, a second by Mr. Sanderson. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes, it'll be going back to zoning. Discussion, twenty-three, discussion and possible action on creating a street and drainage committee to prioritize street and drainage projects, spending and relating matters as recommended by the ad hoc project committee, streets and drainage committee, to include subject matter experts from among our citizens. Mr. McCormick.
We already pulled this at a previous meeting.
Mr. McCormick, please continue.
This has been on the agenda a couple of times.
You pulled it.
And we have, we have had a streets and drainage committee in the past, and it has been very successful in prioritizing and organizing the works to be done on the streets, and I commend Councilman Gregory for his work there. I think he's in the best position to argue the, the value of a streets and drainage committee. This was a recommendation of the ad hoc project committee because of some of the things we were looking at that we thought needed to be done about streets that we really couldn't very well address directly. Because first of all, we don't have all the expertise, and the expertise is here. And so we felt that was the place to come in and try to reestablish a streets and drainage committee.
Ms. McLean?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that each member of council, plus the mayor, gets to appoint one person to this committee, and we come back to the meeting next month with our, with our candidates, and either make the candidates available to speak or have resumes from them so we can vet them properly.
Thank you, Ms. McLean.
Seconded.
Second by Mr. McCormick, discussion?
Is that what this motion does? It looks like all their, all this motion is asking that we create a street and drainage committee.
And I'm suggesting a way to do that.
But that isn't what's here.
Mr. Schnall, do you have a legal opinion?
My legal opinion is that this item just talks about creating the committee, and that's all the motion, in my opinion, should say. The suggestion about how to populate the committee can be put on a future agenda, or, or can simply be acted upon in the way that the council has done so on other commissions. But it would not be appropriate under this agenda item to include it in the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall. Ms. McLean?
The agenda item does talk about streets and drainage committee to include subject matter experts from among our citizens. So if instead of proposing that we each get to appoint one, if I suggest we all come back with potential candidates that are subject matter experts, would that fit the agenda item, Mr. Schnall? Because we, it, the item does actually talk about resumes and people that would actually have qualifications. So I guess what I'm, that's what I'm getting clarification on.
Ms. McLean, a, a motion to create a streets and drainage committee to include subject matter experts would be consistent with this agenda item, but to go beyond that, I think, is outside the scope of the wording, and so we didn't tell the public how the council might appoint.
Okay.
I think the motion could simply be to create the committee and have it include subject matter experts.
And I'll make, I'll make a motion that we create a streets and drainage committee, and that the committee should include subject matter experts, and we'll defer populating the committee until a future agenda item.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. McCormick, second by Mr. Gregory. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Dissenting is Sanderson and Ms. Winger.
I'd like to move to, to table item twenty-four.
Okay, item twenty-four, discuss and possible action to appoint, reappoint four members to the ad hoc project committee to fill vacant positions created by the election of Mr. Mark Sanderson, Mrs. Sylvia Gonzalez of the city council, Mr. J. R. Trevino of the office of mayor.
I'll second that.
Motion to pool by Ms. Winger, second by Mr. Sanderson. All in favor?
Motion to table, Mayor.
Motion to table, I'm sorry. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes three to two with McCormick and McLean dissenting.
And I'd also like to move to table item twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight.
So we have a motion to table item twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight.
I'll second that.
A second by Mr. Sanderson. All in favor? No. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, the motion to table fails. We are on item number twenty-five. Consider an act on the appointment of a council member to serve as mayor pro tempore for a period of one year.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. McLean?
I'd like to make a motion that Mr. Douglas Gregory be the mayor pro tempore.
We have a motion for Mr. Gregory. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. McCormick. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Mr. Gregory.
I don't want it.
Okay. Do we have another nomination?
Mayor, you have a motion and a second to nominate Mr. Gregory. That motion has to either be withdrawn or acted on before there can be another nomination.
I'm sorry, good catch. All in favor of Mr. Gregory against his wishes? All opposed? Oh, okay. So we're at two to two? I, I wouldn't do that to you, Mr. Gregory. I'll, I'll vote against as well. Do we have a, motion fails? Do we have another motion?
I'll move to table.
I moved to table by Mr. McCormick. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Gregory. All in favor of tabling? All opposed? Ms. Winger?
What are we voting on?
We, just table. Okay, so all in favor of tabling, passes unanimously. Consider an act on the appointment to the zoning commission. Mr. McCormick.
This was already tabled.
No, it failed.
Oh, it failed.
Mr. McCormick?
Okay. I'll pull it for the time being.
Okay, we have a motion to pool. Do we have a second?
It's just, it's my mo, it's my item.
I'm sorry, I stand corrected, pulled. Consider an act on appointments to the architectural review committee.
Move to table.
Second.
Table, second by Mr. Sanderson. All in favor? All opposed? Mr. McCormick, how'd you vote on that?
Yeah, I voted for it.
Okay, unanimous to table. Phew. Lastly, consider an act on the appointments to the board of adjustments.
Where's that?
Twenty-eight, last one.
I vote, I'm gonna go and make a motion to table this one.
That's what I just, I just tabled, yeah. No, we just voted on that.
And it failed. We have a motion to table by Mr. Sanderson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McCormick. All in favor? Is that, Ms. Winger, is your hand up?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, passing unanimously. Do we have any citizen comments for people that have waited this long? Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Okay, Jason Braden. You have three minutes.
Jason Braden, five oh three Antler Drive. I just wanted to say that part of me being here is the fact that when this was moved to the end of the meeting, I felt compelled to stay here just to be able to simply come up and speak. Because what I've seen today, when we're talking about this, I've seen people not allowed to speak, I've seen people who are favored allowed to speak, people who just wanted to ask simple questions were denied access to the council. This is unacceptable. And it continues, even the ordinance we're talking about altering a prior resolution wasn't even allowed upon. So the idea that we're here and we're staying here till ten something at night shows that this is, this is something that the way it's working now is unacceptable. What I've heard from everybody today is I've heard them, not just from us, I've heard people complain about how difficult it is to be on the city council. I've heard people complain about what it is. I've, I've been in situations far more tense than this without shouting at people, without shouting us down. I work in situations where children's lives are at stake every single day, and I've been able to act better, and the other people may have been better than anything that I've seen here. So what I really want people to start to think about before we keep going on with this, is that there are people to be heard, this is representative government. If you don't want to be here, I suggest they go somewhere else, right, and start to get it together. Because this stuff that I've seen here, this is not representative government. I said it before and I'll say it again. And we're gonna get to a point where we'll be able to address this council in real time instead of waiting till ten o'clock at night when everything's been voted on. So what I suggest really is to come back next week and realize who exactly every single one of you works for. Really come as a why you are here. Why are you on the city council? Ask yourself that question before you come up here. Before you come sit in front of us and make decisions about our lives. Okay? That's what I'm asking you for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Scott. Okay, um, I think that is it unless there's anybody else. Okay, and now, sorry, you beat my timer. Announcements from council? Mr. McCormick?
No announcements.
Mr. Sanderson?
I do.
Okay, Mr.?
You have one announcement.
Yes, sir.
It is that there was a meeting of the project committee scheduled for this coming Saturday that's been canceled and moved to September seventh. The project committee will meet at ten AM on September seventh, Tuesday, Saturday morning here in council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Mr. Sanderson?
No announcements.
Ms. McLean?
I have no announcements.
Mr. Gregory? Okay, I'll double check with Ms. Winger when she gets out, but I just wanted to add that Mr. Rapley and I attended the T M L Region Seven Conference in Eagle Pass. Was actually, I was honored to be chosen as a vice president for Region Seven, which is basically southwest Texas. There's about maybe eight counties included in that, and I'm hoping that I can use that to learn more about the way that our city should be operating in, you know, best practices. I look forward to representing the city of Castle Hills. And we're just waiting for Ms. Winger to see if she has any comments. But I appreciate all of y'all for holding out till almost ten thirty. Agreed. Ms. Winger, did you have any comments? Okay, but that is it. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
A motion by Mr. Sanderson, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Winger. All in favor? Unanimous. Everybody have a good night.